Good evening, welcome to the study session September 23rd. It's all the order. Mary, do your roll call please?
Yes, I will. Councilwoman Bush.
Yes.
Councilmember Sterns here. Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nisco.
Here.
Deputy Commissioner here. Councilwoman Saff here. Councilwoman Reed here.
Here. Thank you, Mary. Right, next first item, the city manager Mark Ziegler has information for us about the 2026 budget.
City, the first and only item to the council, we kind of combined the annual discussion just into this session at the same time. As we felt like it.
It was just more appropriate, right, to have that discussion. So first and foremost, we've got other department directors and staff in the audience tonight as well as at the table. So if you have any questions, this is intended to be an interactive process, really to get guidance from the council on where how the 2020, 2026 budget is going to be formulated. We've been putting a bunch of work into this, including the council retreat starting in May, on May 5th, to discuss service level priorities. You'll see the budget calendar on the screen in front of you tonight. We're down at September 23rd where the study session is taking place. We're currently working on, excuse me, let me go back. We're focusing on the general fund budget tonight, just to be clear. The utility budgets are a little bit more in process and those will be coming to you with the preliminary budget as a whole. You'll see the 26, our master fee schedule, changes are due from departments to the finance department. So we can compile those and bring those to you later as a proposal. October 1st preliminary budget decisions will be discussed with the leadership team based on tonight's discussion with council. By October 10th, budget summaries were due. So that's part of the budget book. Drafting the summaries about the budget for 2026, how it affects their department. Finance, not just September 8th through October 10th, but really as we've talked about budgeting, it's year round process. It's a dynamic document that is managed by all of our departments, the finance department throughout the year. So September 8th through August, October 10th is not the true period of time that we're creating this budget. That's where all the work is being done to put together the preliminary budget for council. Considering the public hearing on the 4th and again the final hearing on the 18th with final adoption on December 2nd. We plan on having a supplemental, a 2025 supplemental budget, that's the last item within the calendar there back in December to true up some of the costs and expenditures this year, identify some of the revenue streams that have, you know, that we've been fortunate enough to incur this year. But the associated costs with those and maybe some shifts within particular department budgets to cover associated costs of projects at the same time. So a little chewing up. Any questions about the budget calendar? All right. Roll and hopefully you saw the hard copies in front of you. Need to make this a bigger screen. Not that big. I've used this Venn diagram in the past. I think it really represents the reality of what dealing with municipal finance these days. You'll see the intersection of the circles and that's really where, if you will, the rubber meets the road, right? I want stable services up in the left hand corner. I want low density up in the right hand corner. So where those meet are the high taxes that you have, because you have less of a tax base to pay for those stable services that you may have. Down bottom, low tax rates, again, up to the top left hand corner, I want stable services. That means more density, right? You're sharing the load, you're sharing the cost of these services amongst the community and spreading that out on the top right. I want low density and I want low taxes. That means your service levels have to decrease at some point. You cannot sustain that. So and then in the middle, it's just a world that does not exist. We're constantly manipulating our budget, managing our budget, managing our service levels in order to meet all three of these parts of this Venn diagram. It's really dynamic. Like I talked about, the budget processes year round, we're working on it constantly. We're adjusting how we spend the available resources that the community gives to the city and trying to weigh that with the council's priorities moving forward, service finding. I think this is a good representation. I have a graphic that's not talked about often. I thank Mary Ricker for putting this together. I've seen this utilized in practice in other jurisdictions. And so we took the actual property taxes allocated in the city of Shelton and divided that out with the $1 bill for visual representation. You'll see local school levies of 35% of that dollar of one's property tax for somebody that owns property in a city. City has 23% of that or 23 cents of every dollar. State schools, another 23 cents or 23% as you go down the county. The Shelton Metropolitan Park District, Hospital District, Library and Port. So it gives you a little representation of how those property taxes are distributed. If you haven't looked at your tax bill, you can go on your tax if the county sends it out anymore frankly to individual property owners. But on the county's website, you can look down and find how those are distributed out each and every year. So I want to start with the council's strategic goals. These are the 22 through 25 strategic goals adopted again back in '22. So the mission of the city of Shelton strives to build a strong community and quality of life. Vision, Shelton is a community of active lifestyles, accountable government, engaged citizens, safe streets, strong work ethics and inspiring leaders. There are three elements to these strategic goals and I just highlighted a few as they are defining properties of developing this 2026 budget. Under clearly defining the future is planning proactively. We need to plan proactively, not just financially, but with our service levels and how we're distributing and providing those services to our community. Transparent, long range financial plans across all funds. Again, part of this discussion tonight, it's not only a 26 budget, but looking forward over several more years and how the available resources will continue providing those services over time. As you know, we've dedicated in fund balance to balancing the general fund budget over the years. We've done a great job this year as that those costs continue to rise and the services become more expensive to provide. That erodes that in fund balance. Community safety, ensuring public safety services are funded and staffed appropriately and managing full lifecycle of the assets and then engaging the community, investing in technology that enables timely and high quality services. We have approached this budget with sustainability and proactive financial planning. Within that, we have continued to review the 2023 Financial Sustainability Task Forces recommendations for implementation moving into the future. We've done a lot of that already, but there's always places we can go back and refer to to make sure that we're meeting some of those recommendations. Focusing on core services, core services obviously revolve on public safety and commerce here at the city of Shelton. So I want to make sure those are values and core services that we're going to maintain. Strategically planning, not being reactive, being proactive, being strategic, planning on those in the future. Making sure that we can sustain the services realistically rather than coming back and be evaluating on a regular basis and those services change on an ongoing basis. So we can be as transparent as possible and predictable as possible as well as being strategic. The intentional decision making, again, we have a path forward. We have these visions, mission, vision, values and our goals. Those are intentional decision making processes. We're following those and we're making these decisions and being proactive and not reactive. Staff retention and development, we've heard this over and over from our staff. We're in a competitive market in a place that competes with the South Town Region, Thurston County, with the cities of Olympia Lacy, Tumwater, the state. It's a market that the city of Shelton can't compete with. We, it's very important that we retain staff with that institutional knowledge and the staff that want to work for the city of Shelton, want to provide the best service possible. But there's a threshold there, right? It's about compensation. It's also about workload. At some point, if you can't maintain the appropriate level of staff, the workload falls on a fewer number of staff and then it becomes a point where somebody decides they may need to move on. So we want to continue recognizing that. And again, it's not always compensation, but it's valuing our employees, providing the benefits that they deserve. It's also making sure they have a work-life balance. Make sure they have the ability to go home to their families at a reasonable hour, making sure they can take the vacations without feeling like they're leaving a lot of work on the table either for their coworkers or subordinates or it's waiting for them when they come back to work. Public safety, as I mentioned before, it's really truly the utmost responsibility of a municipality. We want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community at every step of the way. And then asset and facility management. We've talked about our streets and our facilities. If we let those deteriorate, it costs us more. These are critical assets to our community, for commerce, for governing, for providing the critical services. But we need to make sure we're maintaining those to the best of our ability. They do not deteriorate and it's also a vision, I guess, an impression for the community. When you maintain your assets, people see that in your community and tend to support and trust how you're providing your services. So this is the preliminary budget as we move through. So this will be better informed as we move through this presentation with some of the staff requests, but I wanted to touch bases on this first. So over in the green, 2025 budget, that's the adopted 2025 budget. $15.9 million in revenue was budgeted, just over $17 million in expenditures. That net revenue less expenditures is the in fund balance, unreserved in fund balance was budgeted this year to balance that general fund budget. So $1.1 million was budgeted as the unreserved in fund balance to budget our general fund. That comes from this beginning fund balance. As you see here, the 6.4 million leaves an in fund balance of 5.3, I'll round numbers if you don't mind, instead of go through them all, which is 31.3% of the expenditures for the 2025. We have a policy directive from the council that 20% of our expenditure budget of the current year is reserved as a reserve fund. That leaves $1.9 million unreserved fund balance and you'll see the 5.3. Their total fund balance matches the ending fund balances to see up above. So that was 2025 adopted budget. Any questions there? Next to it in green as well is the 2025 estimated actual. This is essentially as of the end of July where you saw the financial status report last week. Revenues at 16.5 million, expenditures at 16.7 or a variance of 154,000. Beginning fund balance was the same, right, going into the year, but less that nearly $1 million. You have 6.3 million, 37.8% in reserves. There's your 20% at 3.3 million dollars, leaves an unreserved fund balance of 2.9 million dollars. This is, I don't know if I say monumental, but a great effort by our staff. This is not done lightly. This is on the backs of services we're providing our community and our staff. And when I talk about retention and recruitment, this is exactly what I'm talking about. We have people working long, long hours and doing multiple jobs at once and that creates the savings. But again, I worry about sustainability. So what we did in the purple, that's the 2026 proposed budget. So what we did is in the revenue line, we proposed an estimated revenue based on the information we have available to us. And why it differs so much is one-time costs. One-time costs you can't really predict. There might be a grant fund like the $100,000 TMVHO grant for DCR services. There could be some permitting costs. There's some great grants that we received from our community credit union for PD. And it really is, as Terry mentioned last week, it really, you can't pinpoint it in one area where those revenues increased. It was a little bit, if you will, across the board. So what we do know is sales tax, property tax, BNO tax are pretty darn consistent over the years. They don't change a whole lot. So expenditures, we took the baseline budget from 2025, removed any one-time expenditures for 2025 and then added a few things like increase in public defense contract, our public defender's contract is expired at the end of this year. We've been talking about a contract and inflationary increase for that service. Some known increases in MACECOM's contract. Vehicle leases that were purchased through enterprise this year and adding those in next year. We know those are costs ongoing, made that commitment. So we have five police cars we're paying leases on. Oh, and then any employee costs, sorry. So any COLAs, cost of living increases, step increases and benefits, medical benefits that we know that we're going to incur, we're carried over. Did I cover everything?
Okay. I have a quick question. Please, out of the $1.13 million that were shortfall, it was now $1.54. How much of that is unfilled positions that we purposely didn't fill?
I don't know if we quantified that and I don't know about purposely filled. It might just be timing.
The cost.
You know, some costs, there's some. You didn't see a lot of that in July, frankly. We'll see more of that over the next couple. You'll see more of that in August and September, frankly, because we, you know, we had some departures in June from the finance department. We had departure in public works in May, April or May, is that right? Jay, but we backfilled that with an interim position to get some of that work done that's ending in October. So we'll realize some savings there. So it's intermittent, but
I was more worried about out of this, we got $104,000 left out of 1.1 million. I was just going, is this because of positions that we haven't filled? Is this going to build back up over time? That makes sense.
It could, yeah. Let me get through this a little bit because there's some position reallocations or they're not included in the proposed budget. It's a good segue. So within the proposed budget in purple, that does not include fulfilling two open positions that are in the 2025 budget. So there's a patrol officer within that. And there's also an admin support position within the public works department that are not included in that budget.
That is kind of where I was going.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see. So drilling down, beginning fund balance of 6.3 million, right? 5.9 is the end fund, ending fund balance, you know, 6.3 minus the 330, 35%. 3.4 million is the reserve 20%. 2.5 million is unreserved fund balance for a total of 5.9. So again, that's our starting point. That's where we are tonight. And then we'll work through some of the department requests, the council's goals and expectations moving into 2026 and refining our budget from that point. I'll go through these before we go through the requests. The yellow is 2026 department request, one-time request. So these are expenditures that would be incurred through that fiscal year, the 2026 fiscal year. I have kind of segregated these out and I want to be clear, it's not necessarily how I, it's not how us as a team have a consensus that these are priorities because they're essentially, they're all priorities. You'll see there's not a whole lot of, it's not a whole lot of fluff if you will, for lack of a better term. I'd like to use something more technical, but you'll see there's not a whole lot of fluff within these requests. But I felt like I had to develop these in certain different categories just to break it down for council review. So I put these as a priority one, two, and the ongoing requests are any expenses that might be staffing, vehicle leases and things like that that we'll see beyond the 2026 fiscal year. So run one-time requests. I'm sorry, I didn't change that. 14, 599 is the actual number there. We add the 599 into the 330. I didn't change that number either. Use a 614 number. You'll see, I started tweaking the department requests.
Our word of the snap.
Exactly right. They're close, right? We're about $15,000 off. I think that was reduction in actually the post-plan as we'll get to that one time. So if you take that number, 945, 629, it adds the 330. That's the in fund or in fund balance used to balance the budget. As we drill down again, the ending fund balance, 520, 5.2, we have 30%. 20% is 3.3, 1.9, unreserved fund balance, still healthy for one year, right? As you, if you dedicate $900,000 to that, you have essentially three years, you know, or less. Priority twos, 325. So this is the aggregate, right, across the board here. It's 1.271. So it's the baseline budget in the purple, the one-time priority one request in the yellow and then the one-time priority two request in the orange for the 1.2 million dollars in offset from the reserve. Again, 3.4 is your 20% reserve, 1.5 is your unreserved fund balance. And then we'll go over to the ongoing requests. You add these in, 862, 2.1 million dollars brings you down to your unreserved balance of 482. So it just gives you kind of a demonstration of what these one-time requests look like as we're considering these and the information that we received from council tonight. Good? All right, we'll get into the departmental requests now and this might be small on the screen. And some of these have options, if you will, or there might be a grant that we have out. So I'll go over that a little bit. So we'll start in the one-time, well, we'll go down through the one-time list. So there's server switch replacements within our IT department. We have a grant through actually the Department of Military that may cover that cost. We're still waiting for news on that grant. So that's a $50,000 cost incurred. And then our Windows Server replacement, same time, we applied for a grant that will cover both of those. Hopefully we see that at some point, but we put it in the budget to demonstrate the need in that priority one. And then there's a $10,000 line item addition to continue with our replacement of computer hardware for our departments. Moving on down, council strategic planning, that 2025, 2022 through 2025 strategic plan ages out. We'll have obviously the election coming up, a council seat at the beginning of the year. I think it's important that we get around the table and have a strategic planning exercise to develop that plan moving forward with our community. $20,000 increase in professional services and advertising within HR. So this would primarily fund ongoing training and professional development throughout the city. One thing we've seen in a recent survey with our staff is the desire to continue with professional development and training so people can progress through their careers, but also add value to our community and our organization, right? If we have people that have higher levels of training and expertise, we can rely upon them to perform a higher level of service. Within the court, there's small tools, oh, excuse me, yep, court, small tools and equipment. They have office equipment needs with the implementation of paperless work system. We have a JAVS warranty, our system that is, we're using tonight, including the TV, microphones and cameras. That's a warranty system that has proven its worth with as much work as we have them to do out here. We have increased travel and training, finally the judge, but also clerk staff within the court office. Down at PD, we have flock cameras and the lease for those at 36,000. Taser, essentially a payment program. We purchased tasers throughout the department this year. It's on a five-year payment program. We're happy to have that interest-free. But instead of incurring that one time, we've spread that cost out over five years. So that's the 2026 allocation. There's 7395 for training for Criminal Justice Training Center for new, a new officer that's coming on by the end of this year. Uniform invests that is partially supported through grants, but it doesn't support that 100%. So those are on a regularly scheduled replacement. I've got $50,000 in here at MACECOM as the placeholder. Again, we put $100,000 in the proposed budget. There's a bunch of work still going on with the MACECOM board. There's a lot of needs for technology upgrades, space upgrades. And so we're waiting for some more information coming from them. So again, kind of placeholders right now, we'll continue to refine that and be able to provide you more information as we move forward. Street allocation. One thing I didn't mention is the baseline budget, general fund budget did not have an allocation to the street fund as it does this year. We have a $400,000 allocation from the general fund to the street fund in 2025. We moved that for the purpose of having that discussion about service levels. In this, these department requests, there's a $200,000 allocation from the general fund to the street fund. That still leaves another $200,000 that could be offset potentially by REIT or again, real estate exercise. Apologize for using the acronym or through an additional general fund allocation. If the council so chooses in reducing that level of service, it could remain at that $200,000 again, up for further discussion. An addition of a seasonal employee, a five-month position that would address litter, weeds, general cleanup and things like that within our streets and downtown area specifically. Again, a $20,000, if you look down here, $20,000 seasonal employee to address litter, weeds, landscaping around our city buildings. We realize that it's, we're just not keeping up with some of that work and we could certainly focus on that, particularly the growing season. $50,000 in professional services engineering. This is specifically for contract, plan review, civil review for the developments that are coming down the pipe. So we have some peer review through contracts to make sure the civil plans are meeting our code and meeting standards. We have one P, well, 1.4 P is within the public works department right now. But also the P is the department director and doesn't have the time dedicated to reviewing these plans at all times. So we utilize an outside firm to do some of that for us and support us.
That's being offset by permit fee, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Further down, Parks Department requests, a $7,500 structural analysis of our skate park. It's been there for a number of years. It's a wood structure. We are seeing failures within that, those structures and a number of repairs. And we want to see if it's really viable structurally anymore, whether that facility is going to be maintained. We can repair it. We can reduce, you know, the apparatus and focus on, you know, a few of them rather than the six. There are really, but develop a plan moving forward. Replacement of a 27-year-old tractor at $30,000 and then there's that post-plan, update the Parks Recreation, Open Space and Trails Plan. Update the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan. Questions about that priority one line?
I want to ask, um MaceCom is previously here, correct?
They are still located in our building. At this point, um the plan is they'll be here through this, through the end of this year and most likely much of next year. Um they've got some, like I said, they've got a lot of technology upgrades and improvements at the building uh that they've planned on moving into that is contingent upon all of the partner agencies helping fund that. So um we need to come together as the partner agencies and determine what the priorities are, how MaceCom can continue providing the services they're providing, and frankly, enhance their services and address the their infrastructure that is this beyond life in many cases.
Did you uh in the twenty six budget proposal, did you take into account the proposed eighty five percent MaceCom increases that had been were early proposed and now kind of going backwards and going to pull it back up?
Yeah, you'll see the, you'll see a two hundred thousand dollar MaceCom ongoing uh line. So as again, we put a hundred thousand dollars as a placeholder in the twenty six. I've got fifty in here, so it's a little bit redundant, but not knowing where we're at. Um the original um proposal or one of the proposals, if they were fully funded this year and they implemented um a lot of the replacement costs that they need for their equipment, they have full staffing, they get their move in uh to their new facility. Uh that was proposed to be a two hundred thousand dollar increase to the City of Shelton on in and at uh cost.
Really? No way they can make that work here? That that just seems expensive.
There's, I mean, they can only sit three dispatchers. So if one dispatcher is training, the fourth dispatcher, they don't even have a seat at the table for them. Yeah, yeah. It's it's really tight. And now, now that they're doing the true needs assessments and understanding what those are, um last year, I think they're operating at six or eight dispatchers and oh, I forget what their overtime costs were.
Yeah, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, something like that.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're paying, yeah, yeah.
So even though that they've gone back to draw, there's some pushback and they've gone back to the drawing board, but now they're looking to pass on other fees to the city potentially or county and yeah, all all the providers.
They're they're reexamining the services they provide and and is that their, is that MaceCom's true mission, right? Because um some of it is is legacy from when it was ShellCom as well, and it was, there was ShellCom, boy, I'm going back now. There was ShellCom and there was FireCom within the community and ShellCom did law enforcement dispatch, FireCom, Fire Dispatch, they merged at some point and it became MaceCom House here at Civic Center. And so um some of those legacy programs, because it was, because it was ShellCom, it was a city entity, they provided probably you know, more services maybe than what their mission was. Um those were kind of legacy, and now as they review their capacity, they're saying maybe these aren't the services that, you know, are are critical to our mission, and what is our mission, and how do we provide that?
So since we're talking about MaceCom, uh MaceCom is from Mason County. Do they get funding from the county also?
Yeah, all the law enforcement agencies and fire agencies pay into a a call, a fee for calls for services, and then they receive the the sales tax as well, and then there's some state nine one one monies that fund them.
So are any of these prioritized up to the county?
Oh, yeah, every agency, every partner agency is, was, I think the county was four.
There were four, yeah, there were double one.
Yeah.
And then also uh going along with that, are there grants available for MaceCom?
Look, he's looking into.
Yeah, they're looking for direct appropriations, any grants, any FEMA emergency management grants as well, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
I think even maybe put that on our our legislative priorities for the thirty fifth as well to look at if there's any other money out there, because they need a lot of upgrades.
Okay, I'll run through two. Just shit, is there anything else to add on one or? Come on, I need to cover that.
Okay, well, I do have one more question on this sheet before we leave this up. Uh this skate park structural analysis. What if we don't, what if we just don't have it?
So we could make that decision uh that based with our staff and just say the cost, the cost have exceeded the benefits that we're we just can't maintain it anymore, or it's going to cost us X amount of money based on replacing the timbers, replacing the skate light surface. Yeah, we can determine that without structural analysis if.
And maybe another, if you want to take that on. Not the city, obviously.
But um I've talked to the school, so it's a unique situation. It's on school district property. So it's a three, three party ILA. It's on school district property. Mason County provides uh some funding because the city took it on for Mason County ten or more years ago, twelve years ago, I think. Um uh and took on the county, county agreed to uh provide some fun annual funding for maintenance. It doesn't cover the entire cost of that maintenance and repairs that are necessary. Um perhaps I've talked to the school district, they would rather it not be at that location. Uh I know Walmart has discussed that as well, because there's no parking associated with it, so individuals with Walmart's parking as well. Um we haven't had the opportunity to talk to the county about that specifically. It's on my agenda to talk to um county administrator about that. Um I'm sure they would be pleased to forgive themselves of that responsibility of contributing to the maintenance and operation of that facility.
What about the tribes?
Taking ownership or operation or? Yeah, I mean, understanding the true cost of of fixing it or keeping it functional is going to be important. Anybody consider operation of that facility, yeah.
I would say that you can, I don't think, I don't know, either.
Yeah, again, it's critical to um consider what the school district's intention is and whether they want it to be housed on their property. They have truancy issues that might occur there. There's use uh during the day, during school hours at the skate park that isn't associated with the school. It's an attractive nuisance, if you will, during those hours. So um you know.
Out of all these priorities here, I would apologize for that.
Yeah. Uh we'll go down the the column with um priority twos. Uh Granicus is a, is a software that's utilized for um for transparency of council meetings. Um it's an agenda development software. Um it embeds the agenda into a more um digestible um platform um for the public and for the council's use. Um it also embeds the agenda um items with the video. So you could link uh a resolution or ordinance specifically to the YouTube video and go right to that that portion of of the video. So if you're interested in, say, the budget hearing uh in November, uh you could, you could click a link directly to that uh video portion, watch that portion. You don't have to watch something on. Um I don't want to diminish anything else, so.
Um are there any staff time savings with that?
I, you know, some, Jay's has familiarity with it, I'm assuming that you you really have to get right, a person to it.
You have to get used to it. Um the good thing about it is you produce document, it gets uploaded into the software, a a council briefing, a PowerPoint of whatever resolution. And then the checking mechanisms are pretty good. It reminds you that you have something outstanding. You got to review it, whether it's my staff member, it goes to me, then typically the finance department has to sign off on it, the city madres sign off on it. So the routing works very well. It allows us to be a lot more efficient in our approvals, and I think the quality of those documents will will be much higher.
Do you think it would uh maybe minimize uh the records effect uh a little bit? People can just go back in mind.
Well, most, most of that is available already within our packets on our website. So if somebody seeks that public records request, we just we push them to that, to that agenda packet.
But this would be.
Yeah, I mean, this, this could more specifically identify it perhaps. Um I think quantifying how much, how much time that reduces would be tough at this point, but so it's a thirty thousand dollar total implementation the first year, then the ongoing cost of twelve thousand dollars. So you see the ongoing cost next to it. Uh REPT is just an example. This is again a transparency uh um tool, if you will. Um this is a a firm that embeds your website with an AI feature, so you can type in any question and it would, it would provide an answer based on the information from your website or any document files you may have. It's much more robust than a, than just a how do I link within your, within your website. Um it also has the opportunity to uh record short videos um and embed those with your website, send those out to the media market, to whoever you want within your mailing list, uh any issues, topics, events that are happening at city across many platforms, and you don't need somebody holding a camera or um somebody, you know, writing the script for you. There's, again, there's kind of a chat GPT element. You can write your script, it can edit for you. You can, you know, saying same thing, but reducing it down so that the video is, you know, if our target is a minute and a half, because that's people's attention span, we can focus it to a minute and a half. Um there's, you know, or or whatever is determined, so.
So it's a one, a four hundred and ongoing of twelve thousand?
Sorry, it's twelve hundred a year.
Okay, I'm elaborate.
Yep. Yeah. Uh below that is, represents the quote we had uh from a state contractor to clean up city properties out by the railroad chisel, maybe railroad chisel out there. Um we haven't had any, we've had some back and forth with representatives of the Navy, but no um no movement on accessing that property for the contractor, which would greatly reduce this cost. But that that bid was ninety four thousand dollars. I put a placeholder of a hundred in there in the twenty six budget. Uh also consideration. Um there's two vehicles within community development, one for code enforcement vehicle. We're actually trading out um I don't know the year of the Durango, but it was a, I think a Lakewood PD hand me down a number of years ago to to Shelton PD um. Uh and we're trading out another Tahoe from Shelton PD now, was being placed one of the new vehicles um back to um um code enforcement. So it's kind of a hand me down, really a pickup was most useful um vehicle for them, picking up garbage and shopping carts and things like that. Um then a um a replacement vehicle to replace two other old police vehicles, uh about a nineteen ninety three or four green Durango. An old police charger as well, so. Um down below thirteen eighty three um in office and operating for the courts, um community service specifically, trash bags, gloves, supplies to continue. Um um uh the service of our uh or the the services provided through community service. Um additional gas um to make sure their van is running and then replacing that van that was, I think, a hand me down from um Mason Transit a number of years ago. Does that sound right? Yeah, yeah. Um and then outfitting that with the necessary equipment so they can haul the equipment and and uh and supplies that they need within that van. Uh two more patrol vehicles within the police department. So you'll see the one time cost in the first year and then the ongoing cost next that, as you see above the twelve eight eighty for um the the van would be the ongoing cost next that for community service. Um online reporting, uh this is something PD has been working on for some time. This would be an online uh reporting platform for non-emergency um issues throughout the city, and they would be assigned through, I I believe, whatever allocation, email allocation, I think, to the appropriate staff for yeah, um for for PD to follow up. Um could reduce, you know, calls, individuals can place whatever information they have within this online reporting platform uh as well, and then it could be followed up as as staffing allows and um not necessarily dispatching somebody to that right away to take that report and um create potentially some efficiencies. Uh this would be an annual subscription. Uh SWAT replacing and outfitting a SWAT officer in PD. It's the thirteen four twelve. And then the next um four projects are projects within our facilities department. So we have some siding improvements. It's a stucco um material on the fire nation, need some cracked ceiling. Really, it needs to be repaired and painted um in its entirety. Um this is probably, this is not sufficient to do the entire project. This is just kind of a uh fill the gap type thing and and make sure it's, make sure there's no water intrusion and looking it along a little further. Um you'll see REIT and a question mark. This could potentially be funded through real estate excise tax as it's maintenance of a capital facility. Uh another HVAC unit at the library. Um Civic Center downspouts, uh for those of you that are here in heavy rains, we have a flat roof and we have scuppers that shoot it out beside. There's two on each side, and sometimes it looks like a fire hose coming out of there. Um it's it's pretty interesting. The downspouts are internal in the roof and they come down through the building and and tie into the storm system, but if those fill up too fast, um there's other drains up there that shoot about the side, like I said. So it'd be identifying the needs there. It, they may be too low. Um or they may just need to be tight lined and brought down the building and find a, find an alternative to what it is now. Um we have cracking and uh out here in the Civic Center floor, there's bubbling and cracking in the floor. There's something unstable in the, in the concrete out there. So um fixing that, replacing that. What we've seen in other areas is when it bubbles like this and cracks, when it gets walked on, it starts breaking away, and then you've got divots, holes, tripping hazards, um heels or something like that, toes get stuck. So it's it's this close to doing, doing some of that and and failing uh to that point. So it's addressing at least the greatest needs there and not replacing the floor itself, but replacing the areas where we're seeing these greatest needs. And that's the priority two. You'll see down at the bottom, the tot- tot- total of those, it's three twenty five nine sixty.
On the SWAT mark, that's because we're in this consortium with other counties, other police departments for SWAT. Is that what that's for? The SWAT, the SWAT allocation?
Okay.
That's because we're, we're, we do SWAT with other cities and counties.
We, we do, we do SWAT mostly with the Mason County Sheriff's Department, and we recently, the the second individual in our SWAT team had recently resigned, so that's why we're looking through, uh potentially replace that decision.
How much money do we make a year on property taxes?
Where is it, Terry? Okay.
July.
Oh, got July, right.
So property tax.
We budgeted just over three million. Three million fifty thousand one hundred and seventy nine was budgeted in twenty twenty five.
My concern for the highway free cleanup, that's a lot of money. Um I want to know how we're going to make sure that we don't have to spend a hundred thousand every year on the highway to reclaim after.
Yeah, great question.
No answers? Okay.
I mean, you have to enforce.
Exactly.
Be inspected and enforced. The problem is you can't get a vehicle close to it. You're taking public courts troops and police officers out of critical services out there and and inspect that set people, move them along. Yep. It's good that, sorry, if that resource is expended, we have to increase our service level in those areas.
Um how much, how much did you say it was a day or for jail, just carries?
Uh Mason County Jail's one thirty.
One thirty.
One thirty. Yeah, yeah. Miss Qualley's one forty six. Sound right this year?
Yeah, courts jails.
Yeah.
Um I keep hearing we can arrest our way out of this, but I'm, I'm seeing different numbers here. Sounds like we can get several arrests of people who are. Sounds like we can get several arrests of people who are noncompliant, so I really do think that we need to enforce.
I I guess I'd like some clarity there because that's that's a that's an expense to the city. It's not a revenue stream.
Yeah. We are, we are spending too much money, is what I'm saying.
So mo- I don't know if we've had, we've, I think we've had two arrests for camping, public property, um.
Yeah, we've only had a handful of arrests for camping. Most people are complying with our request to to move along and we give them substantial amount of time to comply. So most, most individuals are complying with with our request and moving along.
Okay.
And we're currently working on individual camps within the city and pushing out towards towards highway three. So we are, we do have a plan that's in place and we're working with public works. Same time to communicate back and forth and and trying to get ahead.
Okay, so if they're not allowed to sit there and accumulate garbage, we should not be going through this over and over again, correct?
That's the hope.
Okay, because I was gonna say it's over seven hundred days in jail for, you know, that hundred thousand, so at the cost. Yeah, so I mean, enforcement is really required in case we're going to spend money one way or another. So I think we need to enforce so that we make the message now that we are not going to encourage this type of behavior. We don't want to keep doing that. No, no, we can't afford this. This is why we're gonna go in underneath.
Uh, well, you know, definitely not. We think our question wasn't any better.
Yeah, it's not getting any better if we don't. Also, I just want to say I am not sold on the online reporting or the rest. Um, I think it's a public engagement platform. We have a Facebook. We have an app. It's a website. We can use that. And for the online reporting, um, I think I just need to hear more data on how much we expect to save on those costs.
Yes, and and we're still kind of monitoring uh the Mason County Sheriff's Department because they're currently doing online reporting and their numbers aren't exactly that great right now. So we're we're kind of trying to figure out where we would sit on that. We just want to mention at this time, we're kind of at a pause with his program right now. We haven't any money invested that we asked last year, so we're still kind of looking at it, trying to figure it out.
Definitely, I'd be interested in what it looks like.
Yeah, and it's still such a new system. We're we're still kind of evaluating what what they have received from the system, seeing if it would be beneficial.
Uh, so I'll go through some of the ongoing requests I haven't touched on. Ready? Um, there's the H R technician position. Here, uh, I was about code enforcement vehicles in the van. Um, again, there's the the ongoing costs for the five patrol vehicles. Uh, the two patrol vehicles that are over here in part of D two and the ongoing costs. Uh, the flawed cameras are included in that annual subscription as well. That's continued. Uh, there's the the next, you know, year or s- or more of um TASER payments, uh lease payments or I guess purchase payments, um annual subscription for the online reporting. A police lieutenant and patrol officer. So lieutenant would be an added position. The patrol officer would true up the patrol officer that is not in the twenty twenty-six baseline budget right now.
Would the lieutenant be patrol as well?
Yes, the the patrol lieutenant would fall in right under the captain's position. So it'd be um administrative position that would uh be uh supervising the the patrol sergeants, the patrol aspect of of the department. Um, we have a few state mandates or a new uh use of force um reporting system through the state called Law Debts that he would be in charge of amongst other administrative duties. And the bottom line for the patrol lieutenant position, there's two. Uh, one is to um alleviate the amount of uh administrative work between myself and the captain, which is difficult to keep up with, particularly the captain as he uh supervises, uh he's the overall supervisor of detectives, patrol. Um, the records department plus other administrative duties. So and also this would aid and succession planning for the department because we'd have that third administrative level person within a within the agency that could start getting into those third administrative uh practices and start learning how to, you know, move forward.
I'm actually okay with with the lieutenant patrol officer. I think we need more cops, not less. And definitely we need succession because I know chief's wife has been bugging him for what year to retire?
Probably more like five.
Not long enough.
So I I mean, I would be okay with 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 so as long as they're patrol, they can be on patrol.
Yes, they would absolutely be on patrol.
On the streets and.
That would be their primary function is is to to uh to supervise patrol, their leadership.
I mean, I know it's ongoing cost on a on a tight budget, especially if we're looking at five years out, but you know, we we did way, way better than we than we projected this year. So maybe next year we'll do way better. Maybe next year we'll do way better. I mean, yes, it's not a guarantee and we do everything conservatively, so we're not in a position to where we have to lay people off, but I I think it's important that that we, you know, we continue with public safety as well and make sure that we we have a plan in place for the police department. It's, like I said, more or better, so.
Well, I'm definitely okay with that, but I would like to get to the point where we're more proactive with the officers instead of reactive. So with this being said, you know, instead of waiting for the call. That's kind of my line there.
So more more proactive police activity, yes, and 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 that's sometimes become fairly difficult with the with our current staffing levels. I mean, and at a period of time right now, we have two, three people either on vacation or on leave of some sort or injured, so that really affects how many people we build out
Right.
there at one time. And right now, it's it's kind of close to mostly we have two officers out right now.
And I understand that. So if you added that.
Yes, correct.
That would give us a little more cushion, so and that's what I would hope.
Yeah, that also would help if we do want to arrest one, which I'm not sure that's the policy.
Arrest is not the word I'm hoping for.
Well, if we do want to, we use the squall. We do, we don't want to take when we have two officers on the street, we don't want to take one off. So it'd be nice to have that a third one around.
Yeah, generally, if that that situation happens, we gotta call someone on the overtime uh and make it okay. Do that transport, so.
Well, let's be honest, when people know they're being watched, they're less likely for doors. So if you're in there, you're in the area where activity usually happens, they're gonna do it right there in front of you, or they're much less likely to. That's just where I'm at with this. All right.
Like, I I guess, to my point, I wouldn't have a problem spending an extra two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on police officers. It's what we hear all the time that we need more public safety, right? But and we do have the public safety sales tax that's available to us. It's a point one percent that would pay for that. Um, but as we're looking at our budget right now, you know, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars before we consider the street fund transfer of four hundred thousand, we do average gear and in our in our proposal here, we've already cut it down to two hundred thousand, so we're going to have lower services there. And a ton of ongoing stuff with vehicles that we're also going to be considering. Like, I support it, but we gotta fund it. That would, that's my concern. We're allowed to do that councilmatically. We can do that all at once. We can have more police on the streets. We just have to pay for it as community.
I'll I'll finish up with the last staffing, the eighty-six, three forty-nine. So this is the, this is the admin support position within public works. Um, I you'll see the notes about project coordinator and potential u- utility funded. So this is within our engineering administration services. That's a general fund um department that's supported through utilities in our indirect cost model, and I'm not going to go indirect cost model tonight. Terry can, but uh, but essentially it's how other other services within the city pay for general fund services. That goes I T, custodial, storage space, your time, council member's time. So the number of agenda items that a department might have is allocated out based on a percentage of the total agenda items through the year, and then that's allocated out based on the cost of council. So um the admin some admin support slash project coordinator position, however, that um is looked at is is critical to, again, that admin support. They're they're writing some briefings. They're doing they're putting together some some documentations for to follow up on grants, purchasing, um, they're they're coordinating public events for transparency, right? Everybody likes to touch a truck and public works weeks and stuff and stuff like that. And some of the functions that 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 position provides, obviously, going into the project coordinator position is much more than an admin support, but it um, these are these are services that aren't being provided within um within public works right now, the departure of a staff person and that not being filled in the twenty-six baseline budget. Happy to, Jay, any other comments on that?
Yeah, a couple of other things, just emergency management. I had a real part-time on that, keeping that program going with the county. Uh, that was real important. I go into that, their monthly meetings up there, that sort of thing. Um, and reaching out to the public, you know, was a small amount of their time, but it made a really big difference. Uh, those PowerPoint presentations that I show a lot of, I was having them create a lot of those also. Um, so a lot of that's falling on me and Aaron and Brett as other staff members. And, you know, a- after a certain point in time, it's, you know, I need to get into administrative duties and not be in assembly PowerPoint. So um, it's an important position. Um, a potential there is to move that position over to be utility funded and out of the general fund. Um, and uh, that position would be out of there for, you know, a a extended period of time. Um, the indirect cost model is every two years, so they go back. So for twenty twenty-five, uh, it's costing twenty twenty-three of the admin assistant that was here in twenty twenty-three. Um, so it's always a little, you're always looking a little backwards in that model of of what are you funding when sort of thing, so.
Our intent is to address that in twenty twenty-six as well and engage a firm that can review our cost model, propose potentially a different cost model that that is best practices that meets the state auditor's office requirements because we, you really can't frankly, you just can't make up your own, right? State auditor has has requirements that we need to meet. This is our existing cost model is approved through the auditor's office. And in in order to review that, come back around and see if maybe there's a best practice to true that up a little bit, get away from the duty year. Um, really look at how the other funds support general fund services and maybe there's some direct uh, there's some opportunity for direct charges to some utilities that since you paying for that now, it's it's a comprehensive look at it, right? See how it affects the entirety of our our operation.
Some of the costs of that position too, because we want to move forward in the project coordinator, uh, it's Aaron Nett's last council meeting, he gave a lot of presentations, right? Assisting him with those uh, you know, facilities parts, uh, the assistant director. Um, so uh, that would be very, very helpful to have that person. Then the project funds would pay for a piece of that person also. And then be backed by the water sewer and storm guns also. Will probably be the best way. So when would the position would exit from the general budget and it'd show up in the budgets.
I wanted to segue into some of the, some of the property tax and sales tax discussions because I think it's important to um navigate that, see the whole picture as we're seeing residential development occur in our city. Um, the discussion is, is how that's going to affect our general fund, right? We already heard a question about um property tax collection uh as budgeted this year. So we'll just take Olympic Heights, for example. Um, I've got a quick little um narrative here. That's a hundred ninety-nine houses um behind Olympic College. They're moving dirt now. They're putting in stormwater improvements. Um, they've brought a water pressure line from um essentially the Y M C A up to that area. We we believe, you know, there's certainty. They're moving forward, right? Um, bottom could fall out of it at some point, like we saw with Shelton Springs, but we think there's there's some certainty there. Um, new construction needs to be finalized by the county, by us and on the county assessors' rolls by July thirty-first of the existing year in order to be assessed the following January one. Um, so there's, there's a gap in there. If they start their construction this late spring, summer, those won't be on the rolls in twenty twenty-seven. We're looking at twenty twenty-eight. For example, Meadows Edge subdivision, it's thirty-two houses uh on Basil that were completed earlier this year. Um, there's a house that the property sold, I think, probably pre-construction because it was March of this year. It wasn't final till later in the year. Um, that house right now is in thirty-nine fifty-five in twenty, in twenty twenty-five property taxes. It's a four hundred and forty-two thousand dollar valued house, I think. That equivalent is about eight hundred dollars a year in what that equivalent house would pay if they were already on the roll. So um, there's not that, we really have to time that revenue as it comes in. You take those two hundred houses, if they started today, or excuse me, if they were finished today, at about that eight hundred dollars a year, right, it took four hundred and forty thousand dollar valuation, just as a general number. I round it up to two hundred for uh for round numbers again, that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that that would be collected for the city's general fund and property taxes off those new houses. So just for, just for context, when we're talking about our baseline budget, um, as proposed with the one-time cost removed and being three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in a deficit. Um, that's how uh those new houses would affect that. We talk about sales tax a lot and what the implications are, and really, there's no metric that says what a typical house does in in taxable goods and services within a jurisdiction. So I threw a, I threw a number at it. I don't, I don't know if it's accurate um or not, but I threw a thousand dollar uh number at a household. Tax with the purchase of taxable goods and services in the city over one month that they spent a thousand dollars. Now, we don't have a lot of high-level discretionary fund purchases within the city, right? No car lots, no boat lots, no R Vs, um, things like that. Fairly reasonable. City of Shelton sales tax collected is point oh oh eight, point oh oh eight four one five uh percent. So that's what the city receives in both general allocation uh and public safety sales tax. Um, that is calculated out, right, about a hundred at times twelve months, right? Eight point four two, uh, eight dollars and forty-two cents a month, hundred and one oh four a year. At two hundred houses is just over twenty thousand dollars. Just some more context. It, yeah, yeah, yeah. All the more reason that I believe, you know, a strategic conservative, you know, process moving forward with our budget is really important because if we, if you bank expenditures on the, on these revenues, um we're not assured when they're going to come in, but it really, I mean, if we talk about those two police positions, these two, these two revenue streams don't pay for that. Advalorum or property tax, the annual increase is limited to one percent of market value. Uh, if that one percent was allocated this year, our budgeted um property tax is three million fifty thousand dollars one hundred and seventy-nine. The one percent is thirty thousand five hundred. Questions about those? Um, diving into revenue possibilities, as Councilman Gilmore mentioned. Um, there are, House Bill twenty fifteen approved two possibilities for pu- for public safety. Um, one is a public safety grant. Um, that is a grant that will support not only police but coresponders and and programs like that. Again, it's a grant. Um, the issue with that is it pays seventy-five percent of an employee's salary up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You have to make a commitment to maintain that employee over three years past the grant.
And you just mean the slot, the employee itself could?
Um, well, the employee could move, yep. The the F T E, sorry. Yeah, got it. Yep. Um, under twenty fifteen, the public safety sales tax, um, one one tenth of one percent allocation was also approved through the legislature. This is councilmatic. Again, one tenth of one percent pays for essentially the same types of services that the the grant could pay for. This is continuing public safety services. It could be through municipal court, it could be police officers, could be coresponder programs, mental health professionals, and things like that. And then um the transportation benefit district sales tax, there is a councilmatic one tenth of one percent as well that is available for R C W that could be uh added to uh revenue stream to pay.
as well that is available per RCW that could be added to revenue stream to pay for transportation. Making some improvements in the city of Shelton.
Which would then probably eliminate the transfer from general fund to the road department of $400,000. It'd be $300,000, 1/10th of 1%. About that.
175. That would be up to council direction.
Which is where I'm at, in council direction. Talked about service and public safety has been a theme from a couple of council members tonight. Majority, obviously, being able to add positions within a budget that is, is budgeting at a deficit. It's a concern to sustainability. I think that there's a discussion then about how you fund streets, how you fund animal shelter services, other things like that in our general fund. There's the unreserved fund balance use, obviously. You saw those numbers. I can go back to that spreadsheet and show you what the unreserved fund balance numbers will be based on those one-time ongoing costs. And you can see the balance there. And truly, how you allocate that, what's the long-term sustainability if you're using that unreserved fund balance? Again, I'll reiterate, staff have busted their butt this year, frankly, to, to drive that down. I'm concerned there's a limit to that. I'm concerned there's a limit to that. And turnover is expensive. Officers are receiving signing bonuses in other communities. It's, it's something that we just have to consider. It has to be on the forefront. Me as the city manager, I have to maintain that staff. I have to make sure we have the tools necessary to do the job. It's something I consider every end of the day. So I just want to convey that to council. I want to be the dead horse here, obviously, but it consumes, it consumes my day. So we're open to further discussion, direction, questions. How would the council want to speak?
I've always been in favor of stable services and more density. That also goes along with looking at all the tools we have, look at considering our right opinion. So I, I've done, we've had so much in 23. We need to start growing again, start thinking about growing and stop being defensive. I think we need to start investing in our community more. I'm all for stable services and more density, looking at different revenue streams during the city. So I would like to go all, all the low service, all levels of services and ongoing. And I think we need, we need to not, we need to stop cutting things, especially things that are important to our town, like the historical society and the library and all the little things that we make this town special and unique about being sheltered. I'm, I'm, I'm in support of all the hard work that our employees are doing. We need to retain them. We need to make sure that we have a long-term plan. And, you know, 51% of our budget is salary and most of that salary is PD. And I don't think there's any appetite to, to decrease our levels of service in our human infrastructure and investing in our people, at least on my, on my end. So we can debate over 5,000 here, 7,000 there, 13,000 there. But I think that we should start taking care of our people, investing in our city and realizing that Shelton employees and the city of Shelton are the major industry in this town. We have a $16 million budget. We spend most of that money here in town. So I'm, I have no appetite of cutting anymore, and I think we should be being aggressively looking to invest in our town.
I, I think that we should apply for the public safety grant for sure. If it comes to the public safety sales tax, I really think we should have either a public hearing or even a town hall where we can actually talk to our constituents and see how they feel about that. Because, I mean, taxes have been increased at a state level, I mean, at a historic high, and people are really, really pressed right now. So I don't know how quick I am to jump on increasing any taxes, but I definitely think we qualify for the public safety grant, and we should look into that for sure.
I definitely agree with that public safety grant. And for me, it's been at the wrong so many times. It's, it's about safety. We can't grow if the community members don't feel safe. So I'm not against the public sale, safety sales tax. I would like safety to be a priority and show that. But I do want it to be, I don't want the community to feel blindf blinded. I want them to know what we're doing, why we're doing it, so that they can see it. And I do agree with, you know, Lizzie over here. So I'm, I'm not against it, but I think that we need to be very good with that.
Absolutely.
I don't, don't disagree with anything said there. Obviously, we don't want to just throw taxes at people and say, hey, this is what we need. I'm perfectly open to, I mean, we'd have to do a public hearing. Or a town hall would be fine, or even sending it to the voters. We're allowed to do that and ask them. It can be just that simple, like one more cost might need to pay for it. And let's see where those, where those values lie. I, we, we hear it all the time, and we're just going to be in a huge budget deficit if we do, if we just look at all our priorities to, hey, let's pay for all, we don't have the money, so we got to balance that.
I would just, Lizzie, I've already said also, I've heard a public safety grant and maybe, I guess, I have a discussion on that.
Definitely for going after the public safety grant. Public safety sales tax, not, as opposed to, it's not a property tax, sales tax. So if you're buying things in our communities, that's not just going to, again, not going on our residents, it's going on the TBD fund. And TBD, I don't know, we need to figure that. So we just got that voted in by our people not so long ago. So do we want to stick them again this quick? Definitely need to have a conversation about that. As far as the public hearings, absolutely. I know a lot of people want to weigh in because it's a tax. But again, like you've said, it's a public safety tax, and I think a lot of us agree that we like safety issues and those things, so.
So Mark, maybe we can have a study session on the public safety sales tax and the different benefit district sales tax. Maybe even the grant, just one study session and.
Yeah, yeah, we need to refine those grant requirements and bring you the breadth of that, that application and, right? And the particulars, obviously, this, this is a high level shot of that. So a better understanding that, right? Think grants aren't, right? Grants aren't guaranteed as well, so we'd have to, we certainly wouldn't want to make any decisions before, obviously, a grant is, is potentially a work.
Sounds like you have a little bit of consensus to talk about it further, all three of you, the options.
Yeah, those three options. Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about street operations. And some of the, you know, my concern frankly is, is we had great support from the public, right?
73% voter approval of that transportation benefit district. So obviously, if I already are, being able to sustain the services that they've seen through the nine, nine years, I guess, of it being in place is important to them. And it shows that overwhelming support. So we couple, potentially a couple of police officers with or without a grant, I guess.
I heard, I heard, I've only heard one. Yeah, and then, and then the full contribution to the general fund to, to the street fund or 200, 200 at a REIT, I guess we did consider that. The REIT fund balance is projected to be six, sorry, Terry.
It's only going to be four.
With, with this, right? Yeah, with the 200. So it's just, it's 600,000 or so. At the end of this year, $200,000 of REIT contribute to the street, to the street fund. Next year with $200,000 general fund. Obviously helps the general fund, but it might not be, might not be sustainable. We've collected close to, to, about 220 at a REIT. That's what we budgeted, but we're also dedicating that to other, other projects, specifically facilities. We budgeted 300,000 to the safe, secure police fencing project this year out of REIT, just for example.
If we can get people, if people were interested in TBD increase, that could also cover like the seasonal employees who would do weeds and litter downtown. Like we heard about that last week. It's a really good idea to get started getting out there, making the streets look more appealing, getting more people in your shop, which also starts to pay more money into our street funds and other funds. That would be awesome, yeah.
I broke out, let me share this. I just took those, that one-time request sheet and highlighted real simple. I apologize for the rudimentary work here. But the, the blue would represent public safety sales tax eligible projects or expenditures throughout municipal court as well as police. The yellow is what, at least in the one-time requests right now, that could, the TBD increases could offset. If you add these up, and again, it's, again, it's rudimentary because there's, there's some duplication here with ongoing services and the one-time. But just for a snapshot, again, 220 total TBD, 1, 1,085 are the expenditures within the blue. Again, there's some duplications there, right? You see the, you see the ongoing costs with the tasers. I just kind of want to have more of a, more of a visual, if you will, with the color code and show you how, how those two funding source could, could support some of these requests.
I think that's great to show where the REIT.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the transparency our public desires and deserves, yeah. One thing I didn't touch on, back to the financial sustainability task force, another, I'm beating it, beating the drum here. But we reduced about seven FTEs in 2023 in that, that budget correction. About three FTEs may open at, at this time. We eliminated two director positions at that time. An HR analyst, an account assistant, those remain. We, well, we, we cut a customer service rep and a custodian as well. The custodian, customer service rep were, were funded back in 2015. Just saw a decreasing level of service, both internally and externally. So those, those reductions remain.
As well, so. Trying to be diligent, I'm just trying to express, you know, that we have, we have reduced FTEs, which is a majority, as Councilman Louie says, of, of our expenditures, we're doing the best we can to, to maintain those over time. And that's where, you know, these discussions lead to. It's really where that service was most appropriately allocated by council. We've also, most recently this year, buy the clerk in communications position. So Mary's taking on WOE's from what was before. So there's, there's a bit of a savings, a bit of the allocation, some of those things. And within clerk's office as well.
So what it sounds like, if some of these people are basically like doing a full-time job, two different people.
We've been successful getting grants too and direct appropriations from our, from our delegation. It's great. It adds quite a bit of work. We'll see the reclaimed water tank out at the satellite plant go out to bid, I think, the end of October. So that's a nearly $4 million project, I believe, yeah. And so we'll see that, but, you know, it takes, it takes some staff to work, work those through the procurement process, the funding agencies, working with, working with the state and other, if you're talking about federal funding agencies, it takes quite a bit of time to work that through. I think they're, they got notice to proceed, or they were getting notice to proceed very soon. So we should be seeing dirt turned over there. And then we've got the UPS replacement, which the council considered. We've got Olympic Highway North redesign underway. We've got the Crosstown Trail project design kicking off. We've got the vents and lids on our, our reservoirs. We just got approval to move forward with the railroad track crossing removals across the streets. It's a federal funded program. Again, just a lot of, lot of work moving into those. So we've got staff hustling to get these improvements in the ground here in the city.
And then I'm not sure if it can, work is to get a grant. You don't just ask for it, you need somebody to do the work to get that money. So basically, all in all, it takes money to make money in the way there.
A lot of grants require that match, right? And, but yes, you're at, you're, you're expending resources just to apply for the grant without, without any assurance that you're going to receive that.
And that person's not doing anything else. They're applying for grants, so.
I just want to, gratitude for our staff. We're doing more with less. Especially of Public Works Jay, increasing our pavement condition index from 68 to 72 over the past few years. So, and we're continuing to do that, not just on the gateway project to our railroad, but uptown on Olympic Highway. So we need to keep that momentum going, keep our infrastructure strong, so we can continue to do business. And that's the basis of how we do business here in our town, is making sure that we have clear roads, so we can conduct our business on the roads. Have everyone transfer all our good resources to here. And I'd just like to pat ourselves on the back for doing a good job and for the chief for keeping our staffing levels as high as they are. And closing down those areas where we didn't have coverage before. So we're doing so much with so little, so thank you so much. And I hope that we, as a council, can provide more of that in the future and make sure that we keep our city employees motivated and well-positioned to be part of the community, saving the communities, and make sure that we have more than just a minimum wage, but a living wage for all our employees. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Are you looking for a hard?
I think what would benefit staff at this point is further discussion on the, the unreserved fund balance expenditure. I think we've heard that public safety remains a priority. So if that's going to, that's going to be where we focus our preliminary budget on. That's going to dictate how, and then with, with more information on unreserved fund balance and that expenditure and the, and the council's comfort level, that will dictate how we prioritize some of these other expenditures to bring back to you in our preliminary budget and further discussion. If, you know, if it's, if it's expending, you know, all, you know, 2.9 million of it, you know, next year, that's, that's a different discussion about ongoing costs. If it's keeping it, keeping it down to, you know, $500,000 range. We've got a lot of work to do with these one-time requests and a lot of work within our departments for them to prioritize providing.
You know where I'd be comfortable is we start out the year at 1.13 million dollars in short out of unreserved balance. I'd be willing to start out 26 the same way, and then we just work through this list and figure out what's important. Party one, party two, and then that leaves us, it was 2 million, well, it was a million, million and a half for 27.
Yeah, you'll see.
Beginning fund balance. And that's if it doesn't grow, because we actually do a little bit better in 26 than we post.
Well, yeah, I think you can look at 26 today, and if you just look at this 945, it leaves you 1.9, you have a couple hundred thousand, it leaves you about 1.7 unreserved at the end of that day. Regardless of where the expenditures are, now, if there's ongoing expenditures, we certainly will, will bring those out moving forward, because the last thing we want to do is bring on a police officer, most likely an entry level or two entry levels, you're training them for eight months and then having, having to correct your budget and make some tough decisions. I think that's, that's where we don't want to go. We'd much rather be conservative. Budget revenues potentially lower than what they're going to be, or conservative. Budget our expenditures conservatively, a little higher, and then we're not making negative corrections. We're potentially making positive corrections. We haven't got there yet this year. It's 154 in the hole still, but I'd much rather do that the second half of the year than come through and make cuts, particularly when you're talking about it. And frankly, we know you're not cutting an officer. If you've just hired them, they've been through Colonel Justice Training Center, right? After eight months, that's not, that's not the investment that we want to make, that's not the community's expectation. So you're looking at other general fund expenditures where you'd. Um, expenditures where you'd make those corrections and make those cuts. And so being informed by this, this council. To, uh. To at least have a strategic plan moving forward is, uh, is, would be, would be a benefit to me and the staff.
Like I said, I'd be willing to start out where we started in twenty-five, work through this list a little bit better with staff. We want to do that tonight or another, another study session. But, I mean. I believe that. We'll do a little bit better again in twenty-six. We're very careful. We have been for years. So I, I think that would increase, the infant balance would increase, you know. So I, I, I get it, ongoing cost. And I also want, I mean, staff, I mean, is there anything in here that's going to address some of the staffing issues we have and we want to?
We budget our cost of living and our known step increases. We've just completed a non-rep, non-rep compensation study. Um, so there's a, there's a couple minimal adjustments in there, um, but we're not competing with. South Peterstown.
Talking about more about morale and.
Yeah, that's.
Too, working too hard or two jobs or three jobs.
Well, that's more staff.
Yeah.
Frankly, I mean, we, the, the twenty thousand dollars that we had in HR for training and professional development, yeah, we want to address. We want to address staff and their needs, their, their, their physical, emotional needs, right? And, and how they're performing here. They need to, they need to feel like they're being successful, absolutely. But at some level, it means that we're adding people to different departments besides police department to lessen that load. Or we're, we're reducing the service.
I addressed one.
Please.
Because, um. We're to bring you a balanced budget. To you preliminary budget by November fourth. We have to have that noticed legally. We have to have these timelines legally in November. And so that means we basically in finance have to have this document to you. Within about, you know, ready for you guys and for us to have it booked over with, with the, um, the rest of the, the directors. And their team. We basically, it's almost October. Have about two, three. And we think reality to get all of this work done and present it to you. Because we have to have it presented to the city clerk.
But you want front of us right now?
We need decisions.
Yeah, priorities.
Yeah, we, we can't. Keep pushing it off. I would, I would love it, it, or, um. Study sessions, if we were earlier in the summer.
Got it.
Is what we. Can do, you know, next year, have these discussions.
All right.
Well, I guess we start priority one. Does anybody want to go down the list and? And say what we're going to port or not? We've got swifter placement. And that could be a grant. Let's just want to skip those two. They could be a grant, you think?
They can be a grant. We, we can't avoid the fifty thousand. We're, we're, we're at the point of a critical failure if we don't replace those and we're essentially not. We're down, we're, the police computers are down, uh, everything else in, uh, in the city's is down if we don't replace those.
So I assume we're all okay with the swifter placement?
Yeah, we're going to replace, not apply for the grant. Make money out of it.
And both of those. And then, um, what was the laptops? This just gave you hardware?
Aging, aging infrastructure on a, on a regular, about a five-year replacement. We were on seven-year replacement. We're trying to get closer to five years. Um, because we're seeing, we're seeing infrastructure, uh, just. Just age out and break down.
So super important this year.
I think it's a priority, yeah.
Should we just budget for that on an ongoing basis?
We should.
Assume.
It should be an assumed cost, yeah.
And how many years should we have that?
Forever. This basically is, it is basically institutes a five-year replacement schedule.
Okay.
And it's an ongoing, yeah, it probably should be in the ongoing cost.
So this should be every five years?
No, this is every year. And so you, so you get a turnover of laptops and desktops every five years by allocating ten thousand dollars every year.
So we need to move that into basically the.
Uh, council planning. We have to train council, correct?
Well, training's one thing. Getting, getting a strategic plan so we have goals. Uh, and a vision, um, so. So, so again, strategically planning, we're being proactive or not being reactive is, I think, really important. And particularly if we have some turnover of council, we have that strategic plan ending. It's important that we facilitate something. Develops a plan moving forwards, council can. Direct staff on where we want to, where we want to direct our priorities.
Is that enough for a professional trainer?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, my goal would be to reduce it. But yeah, this could be something that's. It's something that, um, some of it's trained and, and has a skill level that I, I certainly don't. Um, and I could participate at the same time instead of facilitating that to get the most out of that exercise.
I'm for a third-party facilitator camp. Uh, that's, that's the expense that I'm okay with.
Think you have to do it.
Right. It's your personal service and advertising, uh. In-house training programs, absolutely. I think necessity, uh, keep our staff up to date on all procedures and. Anybody agree? And then tools for the courts, tools, equipment of the professional travel and training. We asked.
That, in my opinion, the eighty-five hundred dollars is necessity. It's much like the software or hardware, um, purchases. If we leave, if we've, if we don't, um, purchase the warranty on the jazz equipment, we have the failure of not being able to conduct court. And then, right, that's, that's a direct impact to public safety.
And travel and training, I assume because we have some transitions going on in court here in the next year, probably why. Somebody's going to take a greater pass through.
Plus this ongoing training, so I can keep my pencils.
Okay.
And if I can, um, the. Eighty-five hundred, that's actually ongoing every year. So without. I mean, without jazz, um. That's the system we're using right now. It's more dedicated. It's also a system used for running court, recording court as required by law. It's also a system that I think Marinus is the only one here, when I asked for eighty thousand dollars, I put it in. And. It's also a system that keeps law enforcement having not bring people to jail physically to the courtroom. Allows the squally contract to exist because we bring people like video from the jail. All that will go away. Without jazz, this is it.
I'm supportive of it.
Yep. You're, you're, you're easy seller.
With the, uh, training also, um. Court administrators now have to have mandatory training. That we didn't use to have before. So, um, we've got two people now in the court that are going through that mandatory training. And so we have to do, uh, some of this training or we lose our certificate.
Yeah, sounds like we have to move that forward. Um, lock cameras, that's, that's, that's a given really. That's a new program and so far I, I hear that we've. Arrested a few people for some serious crimes.
Yes, sir. We've, we've, we've had tremendous success with that program since, uh, we've had it, uh. I've been going, um. Not to mention, just a week ago, we, we apprehended a. Uh, child molester suspect out of a, a favorite county. We had a child rape associate from Canada. We apprehended numerous, uh, uh, persons in, in, uh, possession of stolen vehicles. We've probably recovered, I'd say somewhere in the vicinity, ten stolen vehicles, that's not including stolen plates. And we've recovered as well, so, so, and, and some investigations that we've had ongoing, uh. Uh, with burglaries of, uh, commercial businesses. It's also a system with that. So. Tremendous tool.
So like it's been a good method so far. I'd like to see how this continues to go.
Absolutely.
We've, we've got a lot of grants for that to begin with. Are we hopeful that we can continue that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a keeper anyway.
Uh, wonderful graph from the credit union, correct?
Our community credit union as well as the, uh. There was the stolen vehicle, excuse.
We had the, uh, yes, it was the, I don't know, Washington all of that. Uh, we got a grant through as well. So those were kind of one-time monies, you know, opportunities. I don't know what they're worth.
We hope some of our community partners continue, um, supporting this program as we show the results and. Chief and captain are working on a presentation. We wanted to gather enough data throughout the lifetime of lock so we could provide you a, you know. A comprehensive, um, report on how it's. How it's being utilized and affecting, you know, crime in our community and hopefully we can utilize that to engage some of the community partners as well that may be supporting.
That might be a great bet for a.
Yeah.
Okay, taser.
That's been a commitment. Yeah, yeah, essentially.
Yeah, our tasers were sold. They probably, uh, were kind of tasers that were efforts of ten years old that we couldn't get repaired anymore. Get batteries for, we can get cartridges for anymore. So this was. If, if we hadn't done this, we'd be, we probably wouldn't have tasers anymore. We had, we had to upgrade.
So you're just throwing them out.
Training's mandatory, right? So.
I'm sorry.
Training's mandatory to.
For the CJTC, yes, uh, that, that is, um, CJTC increased the cost slightly, um, but not, not. Not too bad, uh, but yeah, we're anticipating using that. Uh, for our new hire that would start in November, uh, and start attending category in December.
Which could compound if we had. Get a new.
All right, uniform vests.
I wrote here that I had a partial grant for that, essentially.
Yes, um, every other year I apply for grant through the Department of Justice. Um, this, uh, one I applied for last year is good for two years. We got approximately six thousand dollars, um. We have a rotation of vests. They need a new vest every five years. And, um, that's also a accreditation. Um, and they as well. So typically a year with a, with a new hire and the replacement schedule on, I'm replacing. Three to five vests a year and they're running about fifteen hundred apiece. So if I'm replacing five, but it already goes out. Goes out when I have six thousand dollars. So, yeah, that's why they ask for it. So.
Let's put a question mark next to Mace Farm. Obviously that's going to be further developed and we already have some placeholder. Within the baseline budget now. So there's, there's a potential and reduction based on that. Either it's the fifty or even a reduction from the hundred that's the placeholder there.
Street allocation. So right now the TBD is bringing in seven hundred thousand? A year? This would be in addition to that, and then we got the REIT. That could possibly go. Into this instead of general fund money.
Correct, we're contributing four hundred thousand dollars of general fund money to street, to street this year. This year, that's what's allocated. Exactly right. There is a potential to, to allocate REIT funds. It's legally available to utilize within the street because it's capital project maintenance. To offset four hundred, you know, reduce the four hundred thousand dollar allocation that we made this year.
I'd like to use the REIT. We can do that.
And not add the two hundred, you know, fund. Which, where? Yeah.
Um, I'd like to allocate.
So.
Four hundred dollars. I might not agree with everything on this one and on this two. Except for the slide.
Okay, Lindsay. Well, four hundred thousand or two hundred thousand.
I was gonna say the two hundred that will be here with the rest of the council since.
Jake, can maybe talk about a little more about what a two hundred thousand dollar reduction means within the street fund?
Yeah, so, uh, we'd have to probably buy out two employees, uh, and then I did a list of what doesn't happen then. And, uh, it goes, we go completely to reactive mode at that point. And, um. Anyways, it, it gets pretty severe.
Uh, our street fund has four point six FTEs, I believe.
Yeah. And it's the largest asset in the city.
Yeah, street is four point six five FTEs. So that includes, that includes some. Administrative work. It's not everybody that's out, uh, on the cruise. When we allocate, we allocate FTEs to a budget. It could be the supervisory staff, it could be administrators, and people like that. So just because it's four point six five. Out allocated in the street fund, they're not always the guys out doing the work.
The street pays out there every day. They're always working, they're always running. Um, whatever it is, they're always on it. So, and we, they definitely need that one.
I, I think we have to look into the TBD option, um, the extra ten percent. Um, the, the REIT option is a Band-Aid and it's a bad one. We make two hundred and twenty K on REIT a year. So we're just saying, well, we'll put all of our REIT. Into the street fund to free up two hundred thousand dollars of our general fund. But we already have seventy-five thousand dollars in fees that we're trying to put on REIT for other places. It's our entire capital budget. Basically is REIT and we're going to say, well, it's all streets and our buildings are going to collapse. It's a terrible choice. It's fine for a year. Well, we tried to find a stopgap, but it's not feasible. And we can't build ongoing costs off of that savings. Our buildings will collapse. It's, it doesn't work. So, yeah, sure, this year we can do that. We've got some extra money left there, but this is all of it. And we need to come up with an option or else we're going to have to let our streets degrade. We're going to have to lay people off. We have to make that choice one or the other. I don't want to lay people off. I wanna, you know, we had a hypothetical household that pays a thousand dollars a month and. In sales taxes, this is twelve dollars a year for that hypothetical household. I want to be that hypothetical household. I want to pay the extra twelve dollars a year. For my streets, um. I don't speak for everybody. I am willing to listen to other people. Um, I'm willing to put it on the ballot, but I think that's really where we have to be because we can't. We can't put all of our real estate excise tax into the street bucket. Because it's bad for everything else.
You know, people say we need to run the city like a business, but we're, our costs are way out, outstripping our, our ability to raise revenue. Because we're restricted to one percent and point one percent all the time. We are paying eight point nine percent on our city taxes. Nine point seven percent is what pump water charges. We are well within. Other Washington cities. We can go up a little bit and keep funding for everything that we want on both lists. If we think about our revenue streams and it's not going to cost us anything except one extra penny on a six dollar cup of coffee. So.
Keep in mind that someone has a lot of state workers and they make more money. We have low-wage jobs here, so we have to.
Well, then let's have high-wage jobs here by in, investing in our people.
I think it's too sad to hit us with both at the same time. So for, for safety and for. I think it's too much to do at all times.
Yeah, kind of like the study session anyway, right?
Well, yeah, I think, oh, I'd like to go back and get some reconciliation on, on the, the street fund allocation. Um, from the general fund, from REIT or the combination of, of the two.
I think we had all of it.
So the, the four hundred thousand dollar allocation as, as was this year with splitting it between street fund and, and REIT.
Believe that's what we had.
For one year stopgap, it's okay. All right. We need to, we need to do other.
So, and then going back to, I guess. Mayor, your comment about a study session regarding. The grant, the public safety's.
Sales.
Sales tax, the public safety grant and the TBD all, all at once.
Yes.
Have further discussion?
Yeah. Just a study session.
If you're ready to do ones, you know, the other.
Yeah, uh, we're going to get to budget first, most likely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll, we'll work internally on what, what that looks like and provide, uh. Provide options, yeah.
Distinguished employee. Dress the litter, weeds, general debris, around twenty thousand dollars.
Minor investment, the return of the good of the community.
All right, we had that twice.
Yeah.
Want, want to be focused in, they're both general fund items. One, we focus on streets, one we fo- focus on facilities. Um, if, if there's a priority there, it could be, it could be. Um if if there's a priority there, it could be it could be. You know, one or the other. It could be it could potentially be be split. You know, as a as the first year implementation, um this would be again a five month. Uh allocation, forty hour week employee. Um that is focusing on that general upkeep and cleanup that isn't isn't the highly technical stuff or our full time staff do, but just increases during the season. We've had them in parks and other facility or other other departments for a number of years and. Whether it's mowing and weeding and playground maintenance and things like that that really spiked during the season.
I think it's a good investment in our community to keep things. Really well during summer, especially during high use periods.
Professional services, that is offset by development fees, so I don't have a problem with that. Okay, skate park structural analysis. Well, um. We gotta figure out if it's safe or remove it. So. I mean, the money needs to be there. If we remove it, let's get the house to remove it. Probably.
Yeah, there'll be disposal. Those are I the ILA with the county, excuse me for interrupting the ILA with the county um. Indicates that they share in the cost of of that removal and disposal when the time comes. Um we could play it, we could play it safe and just. Make that determination with staff our ourselves. Um I think there's there's the. There's the need to communicate with the public and the people that may use that. Um so they understand what that decision is, but we can certainly play safe and not allocate those funds analysis. And have staff make that determination. That'll be. That'll be on the side of caution um that, you know, that may read. That apparatus. Slightly for before it's timely for a structure.
I think we definitely need to make sure the schools actually want to just keep it. I mean, it sounds like they don't want it there anymore to begin with.
I mean, they're fine with this is they don't want to see it for the place frankly. Okay. Yeah, they wouldn't let they wouldn't they wouldn't agree to a a new structure. Being there and they certainly live to be to the structure anytime.
What I'm hearing is it's not helping the safety in our community and that's kind of where I put my the basket. So if it's not helping safety of the community, it's actually going opposite direction. I'm definitely not for funding it anymore.
If you have any problems with skating, skate park. Um that's been a source of issues for many, many years, you know, so it's there's always a constant uh. Uh issue with the. Kids there is fighting, drinking, you know, so it it is kind of a a one bite for problems.
Right.
Meaning if it's a problem, then we want to want to keep it.
They definitely don't want to make more.
Kids bad, I still outside of Walmart, but at least three foot out to me. During the day, I mean, I don't know if it's on there at night, the weeds are running around there, but during the day, I generally see. Kids with parents, so.
I mean, I would hate to remove something that kids are using, but I mean, well, I know, I was gonna lose my sentence there that. If we're having problems or it's not safe over there for the kids, then maybe we should probably have a serious conversation about removing it.
I think it's responsible for us to find out if it is safe and let the. Next person who's gonna take it on, figure out is it safe enough to keep or what is the cost of repair? And um I think it's responsible on our side to. Fund this setting of it.
Let's figure out if it's safe. Revisit this discussion there. I think this is probably the best way.
Okay. Well, we'll do we'll do more exploratory uh work with our staff. We'll communicate with the school district and and the county. Um see what the appetite is to maintain structure over whatever period of time that might be. Um we're. I think we reached out to WCA uh regarding a um. Uh mitigation grant or some services for the for the structural analysis, but they they said they didn't have a program. It's that so. Um we'll we'll see if we can get somebody to do a structural analysis. On the cheap or provide some guidance for the um. It's not really manufacturer anymore. They're they're made much differently than they were back then. Uh again, most of them are steel. Uh these days if they're above ground, um this is a structure. Um sitting on a slab, so it it takes a beating and it and it seemed. So we can we can do a reasonable assessment and.
Is skating still a cool thing? Do kids still get into skating or is that something from the nineties that we're all carrying with us? I don't know. I'm a fifty five year old man who drives a wagon, so. Anyway.
I will say it hasn't been a high priority within our pros plans. The last couple of times, but also we've had the facility there. So you'll see typically you'll see. The public input and the survey input uh to address. Facilities that you want to see expand um or added to your community and it's sorry.
I don't feel like we have a whole lot of stuff for teenagers to do. And they're the type teenagers are generally your primary demographic for skate parks, so it would it would be kind of unfortunate to get down. I mean, I'm not gonna die on a hill. It's money, but it would be unfortunate to not have.
I wish they would do disc golf. Instead, because it would decrease the amount of injuries as well. You know, dealing with sprained whatever or twisted ankles, but um I mean. I don't know what what kids' level of risk are and what parents' levels of risk are with their kids.
Um. It's interesting, you know, back when back when managing skate park for years. Um and our insurance provider said there was a lot fewer claims with skate parks than there were with with like stick and ball sports. Just because it was accepted. It was kind of almost a badge of honor at times if you wiped out and broke a wrist, you know. You were doing something cool.
Get a strawberry.
And yeah, you you accepted that. And so there were less claims kind of on the on the insurance side because that's something, you know, we looked at when. The city was taking over the skate park. It's okay. What's the what's the city's? Liability with taking this on and um or at least at that point, you know, and both of us can maintain that WCA sees less that now. If you've got an unsafe structure, you're right, you've got skate like shifting and there's a bit somebody catches or there's a hole. There rail missing or something. That's where your that's where your claims uh certain will come into fruition.
So I'm just gonna reiterate that I think it's gonna need a study and then find out what we're leaving to someone else if we decide to keep it or not keep it. Uh.
I move that we extend the meeting thirty minutes to eight thirty.
Oh.
Second.
Motion second, extend the meeting to late thirty on their side.
All right.
Close. Okay, so did we?
Okay, I think I've got got some forward and then the tractor and pros plan update, those will be those are funded through SMPD, right? And funding source though. Um that'll be a separate budget you get to consider at the same timeline as the. As as the city budget, um those will be considered within the operating costs and the revenue available um through the BMPD.
So we're okay to move on to priority two?
Yeah.
Right. So thirty thousand for a council agenda packet and video management program. Can that wait, Mark? Can that wait?
Yep.
That can wait.
Absolutely.
It's wait.
You gotta start saying no somewhere, right? Sorry.
That's fine.
Terry's going, yeah, yeah.
I'm I'm ready.
And a public engagement platform. So what was that again?
That was a rep is basically an AI embedded um. Opportunity within your within your website that would answer any questions by gleaning. The information from the entire website or any documents you embed in that. So you could ask a question and receive. An answer based on the information within your website and there's a video component to it. Short videos about whatever particular topic of the day. Um distribute those to the community or mail list as well. So again, not a critical function. It's a transparency uh platform, um just adding adding the ability to communicate with our public um in a transparent way. And rope more robust than, you know, system than what we have in place now.
Bill's okay with it, Lindsay.
I think we should wait on that one and. Do that later.
No, all right. So it's off the table. Okay, highway three cleanup. I mean, it has to be cleaned up, but why did this?
I think I'd like to see us think a little bit more effort first to try to connect the baby. I heard he said a certified letter or something. You know, it's kind of, you know, spit in the wind, but. Before we put out a hundred thou.
Oh.
If we can.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we need we need to we need to fully vet. Their participation and access on on their property, right?
Absolutely.
Um before there's any. Any decision on the on the expenditure, yeah.
Okay, I would.
Is it worth putting a placeholder there?
It is for me.
Okay.
Yeah, it needs to be cleaned up.
Okay.
Vehicle leases. For code enforcement and uh. Both for code enforcement, correct?
We'll put those on hold until. Um and we'll ship through some other other vehicles and put those on hold for the thing.
Right, so.
Public Works budget has a couple of vehicle replacements and uh some of the vehicles are twenty, two thousand eighty, you know. That we're replacing, two thousand twelve, that sort of thing that have some life, you know. They're better than the ones from repose this year. That's I mean, we're towing a bunch of those out of here.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But I mean, that's that's potential there for another year.
Yeah, it's the best of the worst, right? Yeah, we'll just we'll continue shuffling the vehicles down.
So um off um office and operating expenses for the court trash bags, I mean.
They're not asking for much.
They're not asking for much and I've been out with them. They pick up a lot of garbage. We did. Last week or maybe two weeks ago, we picked up behind the fence on um. Limbick Highway uh north. We picked up like thirteen bags of garbage behind that. So there was a lot of garbage bag.
Yeah, I I had requested um a little more money there um because the price went up on the garbage bag.
I mean.
They have to be a special heavy duty bag, but. Nothing's gonna punch through it, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a great service. Um. It saves us a lot of money from staff going out there and picking up the garbage as well.
They're assisting public.
And making people accountable for for further crimes. They can go out there and do the work, so.
Mm hmm.
If we don't ask them to clean up, we gotta jail them when.
Yep. Yeah, they get a choice, I think, right? We're the judge. Diane, jail or cleanup, right?
Yeah, we remind them of that a lot. So if they complain about community service, so. Then usually she's.
Not only are we saving a hundred and forty bucks a day, we're actually getting eight hours labor out of them, right?
I don't know.
It's a full day. She told me last week.
Yeah, it's a full day. Yeah, uh well, she takes them out several times during the week, but one full day. Um she has other jobs here um to do the report. She. Also does the interview for her maintenance reports.
All right, we need gas, so I imagine that's probably a given. And um I'm not sure if we need a van this year or not. Um. I would guess I would defer to staff if that is really important. We'll hear.
That's something that we can push right here.
I mean, you could pull it along.
Sure.
Uh the community service van, you know, Helen is very good at putting Band-Aids on it, so. I think that that. That was my big ask on the budget for next year. Um I would like to get um newer van. And he's recruited that off. Not have it next year, but. Hopefully within the next couple of years.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should I think we should put that off as well and also apply for maybe the transit also. We've got their vans every year. Um I think uh. Couple of gun disconnect and. I think we can apply for one of their vans that has probably half the miles on it and. Check on that. Talk and probably check on that, pause. But yeah, I think that can probably wait maybe another year to see how things pan out.
Yeah, we, and you know.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Right. And uh for logo, which run the case for sixty bucks, I I think. Oh, that's right. All right. Okay, patrol vehicle lease. Now, isn't this on the? Enterprise?
Mm hmm.
So what why's it cost us fifty four thousand? Just curious, I thought.
You're paying the initial lease and then you're outfitting the vehicles as well. Yeah, the initial the initial outfitting. Is. Excuse me, I don't remember what's the initial outfitting of it.
For each individual.
Of a patrol car, yeah.
Was. Wasn't?
Yeah.
I was gonna say it's supposed to be twenty.
Mm hmm, yeah. So you're talking about the cages, the light bars, the. All the everything that outfits, yeah, radios.
Would the ongoing be lower for the fifty four, four thirty three?
Yes, might be.
And save money, right?
And maybe in another year or two, you know, we have that five hundred thousand dollars and then price fund that. It's just sitting there just in case we get into a pinch, we have to pull that money out.
We're exploring the payoff of those now. Jay has reached out to Enterprise. And seeing if, you know, if there's a benefit payoff right now and what that looks like.
Yeah, we'll know more.
Because if that saves us some money, we may come back to council and just say. Let's get them paid off. Now, it's interesting, they kind of stay under the lease. They hold the title under the term. Um but you don't make payments on it. So.
Now we can buy the five hundred thousand.
But yeah.
Set aside.
Absolutely. Yes, by all means.
And then do they still maintain?
Uh Public Works is maintaining um but still all changes and um every three to four years that vehicle will go. So we don't have brakes or tires or anything like that. Lease vehicles, those different, uh because they give it a lot of miles and. Using the brakes and tires a lot. And uh is Enterprise maintaining yours or do you have a separate contract for that?
Well, the Enterprise maintains.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
A maintenance agreement with.
We're we're paying for it. They facilitate the maintenance. Yes, they facilitate the maintenance, but it's it's a cost to the city of Sheldon.
And they're the maintenance experts, right? I mean, they can call the dealership because I'm assuming a lot of it goes to the local dealership, right?
Yes, uh it's it's still a new program to us, so we guess we can we can take it to several local.
Yeah.
Places.
And if they don't like the cost, they'll ask a lot of questions. They got certified mechanics, you know, on staff and. It's it sounded like it was a pretty good program, so.
All right, Dan. And I guess the question was, I guess we didn't ask, you really need these two parts.
Um, well. For the past. Three to five years, we have not seen a lot of increase in our ability to get uh these vehicles. The the these five of this last year made a huge dent. We're still experiencing. A few vehicles that have over a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand miles on it. Um we have. And the these two vehicles replace two of our older Tahos, which are. Um yeah, there I think there's I was talking to Calvin about it yesterday. I went at a hundred and twenty thousand miles on. These are old K nine units and we just had another one. Another unit go down on us yesterday or the day before. We blew off the motor. And we're not gonna replace it due to mileage on it. It's fifteen thousand dollars fixed, so we're gonna surplus that one as well. So if that. We could live along, but this would help us.
What do you guys think?
Cars.
All right. It's it's some catch up, right, that we're performing.
And we're trying to structure it where, you know. A- after this next year, maybe, you know, the following year, we could, you only need one car that we can get on a better schedule. We're just trying to play catch up for the last few years. Where we just really didn't have a great. Great lack of getting vehicles.
Right.
Right, okay, online reporting. You said that county wasn't doing very well with that?
And the last I heard county was uh was not seeing that the numbers that they they anticipated from this program. Like I said, this program, uh it's on pause for us right now to do this. We're still looking at it. So we haven't spent a dime on it.
We kind of heard that wasn't a priority in the in the priority two list, so we'll just.
I think we.
We'll move on from that.
Thanks.
And and SWAT. That is for training and.
And training and equipment. The equipment alone can cost them, you know, six, seven thousand dollars. Still have one uh officer on the on the SWAT team, so um this one would just be an extra extra body.
Don't have anybody on deck for that, do you like?
I'm sorry?
You don't have anybody lined up who's like just waiting for the money, right? Like.
No, absolutely not, no.
Can we just bring this back? And like, because if it came back in. May, we'd know a lot more about budget. We'd be like, oh, yeah, no, we got thirteen K.
We we can implement this anytime you want. There's no. There's no really tight element to it. So.
I think it's part of that discussion with the public safety sales tax, exactly. We can we can refine the services. That are provided from, you know, that that the the sales tax and the grant would support, refine. Those services that are that are right now being provided and then what has been asked for in the budget as well. Yeah.
Right, um now we're down to fire department. Right, um now we're down to fire departments, I need improvements, read money. Read money and read money, are we okay with this? Moving up, read after the two hundred.
There is, it starts diminishing that fund balance as means customer.
I mean, the downspout's been for fifty
Yeah, I mean.
Or I mean, five thousand bucks, but is that?
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, it, we'd like to address it, is it, is it degrading? Potentially, you know, from from splash on the on the brick and things like that, um could, you know, could be, it's not the best case scenario. You could shoot it out further, so it hits the parking lot, I guess, and
Car wash.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, well, uh Um I think there's there's some additional assessment we need to do, obviously, when you when you do that assessment and find the best path forward, um that's gonna determine and dictate the project and the associated budget.
Right, we okay with these read options or?
I'm at least comfortable with the library, when I feel like it, throw money to the library, a lot of money, never a small amount. So, out of all the use of, the one I believe to deal with.
Do we, do we know how old the unit is there?
Oh, probably. Um, almost thirty years old, there's there's there's
Five different units there, we've replaced three of them. I mean. I mean, I would say that we need an air conditioner in there in the summertime, we've got kids there reading books, stuff, I mean. I I think that's probably important, nobody wants to sit in a hundred-to-be building.
Well, they're extremely important for the health of the building.
Yeah.
And maintenance of the building as well.
I mean, I'd be I'd be okay with the library replacement.
I'm all in favor of the library and public service that it provides, especially heat, um coolness during the heat and warmth during the cold. Kind of place for people to expand their minds and read a book.
I'm okay with the fire department side improvements and the H VAC at the library. Not sure about the uh downspout, civic center.
Can we do the civic center floor with read? I know it's not tagged, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Uh sorry, is it not there? Yes, it could be, because it's maintenance of a of a capital.
It's perfect. I'd lump all those in, I'm good with all four.
And the floor, yeah, I'm good with the floor, too.
I've seen the floor and I used to be a trust.
I mean, we've paid three thousand bucks to clean it, right? Alone? Uh what's it, three thousand?
Cheaper to fix than have somebody trip on it, so.
So.
I'm with you there.
Alright, so we've got the center floor hospital with a read, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so now we are on to ongoing, right? You want me to go there?
Yeah, why not? We've got uh, we have seventeen minutes by that clock, I don't know what that clock says.
Thirteen.
Okay.
Well, we could get rid of the twelve thousand dollars because we got rid of the thirty and get rid of the twelve hundred. And then then we're down to the one F T E H R technician. Um, and explain that again really quick.
So this is supporting H R and risk management um that will that will help in all the legal requirements we have in both of those departments, assist staff in in training, um onboarding um records management is really important as well, uh within within those departments, um working through um to
Did it do background check?
Uh recruitment, sorry.
Plans or projects are able, registered up to date, make sure that I have the review the schedule for our property, make sure that's up to date, administering and main hanging are federal
Well, that's the cost of government, I'm okay with it.
I I have a lot of heartburn about any ongoing costs, but like, I know you're not asking for something you don't need, so I have a hard time. I I have a hard time saying no, so.
We're gonna have to add some numbers up here, we're not doing it, I'll start to sit in her head. And add some numbers up and bring that back to you, and there's there most likely are gonna be some things that we're gonna have to say. This falls outside of maybe the um the recommended fund balance expenditure. Okay, but at least we have some some priorities.
And we need to be able to hire and fire and recruit if we're gonna grow as a city. So I think it's really important expenditure to support recruiting and retaining our labor.
I I I agree, I I think that I've I've been here sometimes in the daytime and seen seen everybody running around here trying to get stuff done, so.
We are getting stuff done, I'm just trying.
Getting stuff done.
Excuse me.
At the expense of their of their of their smile. Okay, um replace code in fourth vehicle, we cross that out already.
We're down to patrol vehicles, which look like we have shouldn't be ongoing um clock and taser, we can pass that. We're down to the Mace Comp, which is kind of on hold. Right, we'll we'll know what's we'll know what's going on there later. And then frankly, the last one would be the project coordinator admin support uh in public works slash, you know, potentially project coordinator, depending on how how that is uh, how that's determined.
And then and this this person does all special events, correct?
No, that that's in the clerk's office.
Okay.
It formally was so for a a a period of time. So people are correct in that, but the clerk's office is it's done most most of the years.
I guess I can't guarantee where it might be housed at this position, Phil.
Does this help with with like getting some of these projects done, these grants we've got going on? And we can't we can't get those really going because we don't have enough people to monitor them, so.
Uh we have some grants are delayed right now, that we got grant funding, but we don't have enough project coordinators to get them going.
Alright, so I'm gonna take this matter. Get our projects forward.
But just so clear that it could be potentially utility funded or?
Again, we need to look at our, we need to look at that I C I D C model, because if if you start changing that in the middle of it and and what a position was funded previously through I D C in the general fund, you take that out, you've got a two-year lag that has an effect. Also, if it's utilities funded now, or you funded out of utilities now, was that built into the utility budget? Was it built into the right structure?
I mean, I think it's important, listen, we could start working on these, getting these grants out of our out of our way, we can start getting more, and no sense applying for more grants, if we can't get the grants projects going that we have, so I probably think that's probably important.
That's frankly, that's frankly a consideration we have, right? How much more, or, you know?
We're on our
Can we pay it on, you know?
We're we're over over the top of our limits and uh it just walk into Aaron's office and ask him what's going on.
So that gets us through that list.
Yeah.
And I think we have already had, I think we have the consensus to bring back everything in public hearing, I mean, I'm sorry, for study session.
Yep.
Three options there, you know? I mean, we really discuss leveled service properly.
Well, I think I I think I found it found it there, I mean, I I didn't hear it. I, you know, we talked about street, we talked about police, the one the one area we haven't talked about is the animal shelter. That still is an ongoing expense um that is increasing on a regular basis, so. Um we've had some contact with the Humane Society, um there's some interest there. It doesn't reduce the expense and what they're proposing right now, and hoping that we can have you know, more specific conversations and see how that goes.
Is that in the twenty-six projected budget already?
It is, because it was it was it was part of baseline budget. So I hope to bring that back to you as a as, I don't know, study session item or potentially a study session item and see where where that goes, so you can better understand uh that operation of what humane society would be posing. But again, it's not a reduction in it costs, it could be increased services for the same for the same cost and eliminate uh our administrative burden, right, by managing staff, managing uh the building and things like that for other staff, but again, that that cost borne by them, they want they want the city to pay for that, pay for that cost, so.
So do you wanna know where we're comfortable with spending? I mean, I we went through the list, I I understand that, but like I said, I'm I'm comfortable with starting out where we started out twenty-five million one of unrestricted, you know, any fund balance. Starting there, it are we all, we all have a number we wanna stick with, like if he's gonna bring bring that stuff back to us and say we're over three hundred thousand.
You got it.
We're under three hundred thousand, so are we, you know, was comfortable with that amount? And I started where we started in twenty-five? So a million one is where we're comfortable. So and you'll bring this list back again, what we if if we're over, we're over that.
Yeah, we'll have we'll have some discussions, we'll ref maybe briefings or mix in too, we might even bring it you know, to an agenda item really quickly, um and then get some more feedback and refine this, so we have we have the ability to we we have the ability to develop a a preliminary budget, so you you can review it on our timeline and we can get our statutory requirements adopted. Balance budget, right?
Sorry, you know, good about that, yeah. Well, it gives a stroke.
Okay, are you gonna sleep tonight?
Terry's on the W F O A tomorrow, so private buildings, hey.
I think you should do every mark. Alright, how's that?
The city helicopter.
Is that on the list? I didn't see that there. Yeah, I asked for helicopter, I missed that.
I don't think so, discretion very.
Council have any new items for discussion? I just wanted to, really quick, I know that is a study session, but thank Terry and congratulate Terry and her staff for another exemplary audit from the state of Washington, uh we got two out of the way, we got one more coming, and we had a we had an audit for our federal grants. Asked that hundred percent and what was the other one?
The the financial.
Financial, and that passed that also with no findings and no, not even a lot of any letters, correct? I don't remember any letters, so and then we got a grant via and we have another count of all that should be done, accountability audit that should be done shortly, um they just got, they're too busy to to do all three.
In last summer, we went through S N P D in like fifteen minutes instead of an hour, because we have a good reputation and they were like, it looked good.
It wasn't very long this this time either.
The required to get our federal single audit into the files, um that's by September.
Congratulations, again, I think this is multiple years, all years I've been here, I think that we we had faster audits with with uh no findings or a a letter and um so it's thanks to Terry or staff and so thank you again, and you guys are doing a great job of keeping the books, so do my books if you want. Right, this this is adjourned at eight twenty-three P M.